Chansky, could you do?
Woodward.
Here.
Calerous, Foley, Erickson.
Present.
Goram.
Here.
And Duval.
Here. Thank you very much. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. So, looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the following proposed change of moving old business to item seven and moving new business to item six. We'll just swap those two topics. If there's any other changes folks would have to the agenda, otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve the modified amended agenda.
I will make a notion, a motion with the noted changes.
Second.
Alright, motion by Goram, second by Erickson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Alright, those are approved. And now we're moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes. So we have a couple of minutes here. We have regular meeting minute held on September 15th, 2020, workshop held on September 22nd, 2021, and a workshop held on October 13th, 2021 with no quorum on that. So looking for a motion to approve all of those is one motion.
I will make such motion.
Goram, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Good second. Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Alright, now we're moving on. So now we will move to new business. And we'll begin with the seven A warming shelter ordinance amendment request. Director Chansky, could you queue that up for us, please?
Yes, give me just one second. My packet closed on me.
Ah.
So, I gotta go back to that and open that back up. And we'll be underway. Sorry for the delay. Well, anyway, I can do it off memory too, it's up there. The city of Brainerd received a letter from Bridges of Hope requesting that the city consider amending its ordinance to allow the use of warming shelters within the city limits. Currently, that use is not explicitly stated in the city code and how our policies, policy is not explicitly stated in the city code is not a permitted use. So what this group is doing, and Jana will be here to explain kind of the history and the background and I'll let her go through all that, is really asking the Planning Commission and then ultimately the City Council to consider making that warming shelters a use of some kind within the city limits. And with that, Mr. Chair, unless the Commission has any questions of myself, I encourage you to turn it over to Ms. Jana Shogren.
Certainly. And Jana, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, hi.
And your address and...
My address, you said? Sure. So my name is Jana Shogren. I live at 7247 Lone Oak Road in Brainerd. And I'm here tonight as the Executive Director of Bridges of Hope, which is a nonprofit in Brainerd. Alright. Well, so first of all, I just want to thank you for the time in front of you tonight and clarify, because I've heard a few questions today. When people hear the term warming shelter, for some people, hockey comes to mind. So we are not here to talk about a warming house, which is what I grew up knowing it as. But we're here to talk about what an overnight warming shelter looks like to shelter those who have nowhere else to go and nowhere to sleep at night. So, first of all, I just want to say that I am here on behalf of Bridges of Hope, but not only that organization, many organizations, nonprofits, government, law enforcement, we have, excuse me, faith community, funders, and concerned community members. This need of, about homelessness has been talked about for many years in our community, and I'm sure you've been a part of some of those conversations. I've been a resident of Brainerd for 20 years, and I can say that for all of my 20 years that I've been here, we've talked about homelessness in some way or another, and what are the solutions, and how can we support people in our community. 20 years is a long time to talk about an issue. Of course, we've had solutions that sometimes, we had new pathways at one point, which did take in families who were homeless, but we don't have that program anymore. So really, right now, the best solution that we can offer anybody who presents as homeless in our community is a bus ticket to St. Cloud, which is the closest shelter. And for some of us in the community, we just think that doesn't seem quite right to send people away. Because while someone might be unsheltered, it doesn't mean that they don't have roots in our community and that this isn't home to them. So, our group first started meeting in its current iteration in June. Like I said, conversations I've been a part of have been about 20 years. But our group's just been meeting since June, and I have to say I'm incredibly impressed by this group. We started maybe as six or eight people, and every single meeting that we've had since then has grown with 30 people at our most recent meeting. So we're very pleased to see that this is not fizzling out. This group really wants to see something happen. One of the data points we are using, because some people say, well, do we really have a homelessness issue in Brainerd? One of the data points we're using is the Protective Sheltering Program that Crow Wing County Community Services hosted. Between March of 2020 and May of 2021, they housed 386 people during that time, which was an average of 30 people per night who are experiencing homelessness in our community. These individuals presented, and they were living in cars, tents, they were temporarily staying with friends or family, sometimes putting that friend or family members least in jeopardy. Because sometimes that can be a lease violation if you have somebody doubling up with you. Some were living in unsafe situations, some were transitioning out of treatment or jail or other systems. So we believe that this was and still is a necessary service in our community. We are also aware of some of the problematic issues that came with that particular problem. So I want to make sure that people understand how this model is different. That was a fantastic service to the community, but that Protective Sheltering project was an unsupervised situation, and they were motel vouchers. What we are recommending is a supervised, staffed by people who are paid and well-trained. So let me go into that just a little bit with you. Our research into this warming shelter model led us to a shelter in Bemidji and one in Rochester. We've been in close contact and researched both models quite well. And we've chosen to align our planning more closely with the Bemidji shelter because we think that the size of their community and their needs are more similar to ours. So the model is simple. What is it? It's a simple, safe, and supervised place to sleep from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. The doors will lock for the night at 10:00 PM, and no one will be allowed in without a referral from the police department or the emergency room, for example. Guests will experience a low barrier, yet high expectation environment. Belongings will be checked in for the night and picked up in the morning. A paid, trained staff will be present at all times the shelter is open. Volunteers may be utilized for check-in, check-out, changing bedding and sort of that sort of thing, but we really know that we need to have a trained, paid staff. The sightlines of the shelter are open and a camera system will be utilized. While we still have many details to sort out, the success of this project hinges on three things overwhelmingly. A location, which is why we're here tonight, funding, which I will talk a little more about, and a strong leader who we have secured. So I would like to, with your permission, invite somebody else to the podium. Her name is Ann Honeycutt. And she is, she has been hired to lead the shelter project and be the shelter director. So if I could invite Ann to introduce herself and share a little bit about her background.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ann Honeycutt. I've been brought on with Bridges of Hope to direct the shelter, which I'm very excited for this challenge. Since they've been working on this, there are so many groups involved. I kind of have came in about a couple weeks ago, but my job is going to be to make sure their vision is brought forth. The shelter needs to be ran with good leadership, clear and direct guidance, like policies, procedures. And with my experience, I come with 18, or 16 years in law enforcement. I have military background. Since I retired from police work, I have worked with adult mental health services with Northern Pines. I've worked with the foster care system as a guardian ad litem. My family is also provided, we're a foster family, so we've provided homes to foster kids. Currently, I work in the school district. So I have a lot of hats that bring, that are going to bring me some good leadership into this role. And my job will be also, when you think of the community it's going to be in Brainerd, hopefully, that my job will be to make sure crime doesn't go up, that the community is safe, that this isn't going to bring in higher crime rates for the city of Brainerd. I think if this is approved, I can make this run successfully in your city and do a good service to people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you don't mind, I could just share just a little bit about where we're at with funding, just a couple more minutes. So, so please know too, that we, by hiring Ann, I don't want you to think we put the cart before the horse. We really need somebody to champion this project, and we hope that this location can come to fruition for us. If it can't, we would love to continue to work with the city to find out where it can be, because we really think this is important. Funding is a key component, and I think it illustrates the fact that the community is invested in this project. We've estimated that the startup of this project will take around $225,000, with it being lesser to run it in the following years. I'm really excited to report, when I, when I wrote this up today, this morning, we had already secured $122,000 toward that 225. And with two meetings and a phone call that I had today, we're now up to having secured $147,000 of our necessary 225 to get started. You may have read the article in today's Dispatch introducing the project to the community. We've been really thrilled with the response. We braced ourselves a little bit. We weren't sure how the community would feel about this. And I know social media can't be the only mark, but we have, you know, well over 50 positive comments about this, and, and one that was questioning, and we were able to respond to, and got to the point where it seemed like that person understood what we were doing. We also received five calls into our office, which may not seem like a lot, but for, for people not seeking services, for five people to call and, and say, I love that you're doing this. And three of them were willing to put their name down on paper and say, I want to volunteer, I want to be a part of this, I want to help. So we think that's really important. It's been important to, for our group to build a model that meets the needs of not just what we think. As someone, I've never experienced homelessness, so it's been important for us to actually ask people who have been in this situation or are in this situation. And we've had three gracious people who have shared their experiences with us. One who's currently homeless, and two that have experienced homelessness in the past. And, and they have shared this is needed, people need a safe place, people need to have hope. But they have said, they've been the first one to say, you need to be strict, and you need to have rules, and you need to follow those rules. So we've really appreciated that. One of these people shared that she lived in her car for months, for four months, actually. And there was a worker that came into her life and, and helped her turn her life around and secure housing, and things went better. Well, come to find out that worker was Ann, and now she is directing our shelter. So talk about having the right person at the right time. Lastly, location. That's the reason we're here tonight. As you know, we submitted a letter of intent to utilize the space at 1919 South Sixth Street as a warming shelter to serve Crow Wing County and surrounding communities. I hope I touched on the high points of this project and help you understand how invested and organized and passionate our group is regarding this issue. And I'm here, and our group, many from our group are here, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jana. If you'll stay at the podium.
Sure.
It's a little confusing in, in the submissions that were provided in the packet as to when you want them to get up and running. Is it this fall, this winter season, December 2021?
We would love that. We realize that you have processes that you have to go through. And we think that whether we can be open for five months of winter or two months of winter, it is a service that is needed, and we are ready and willing to get going whenever we can move forward.
And, and so, as far as the, the 1919 South Sixth address, that's, that would be something that, if your negotiations go favorably, you would, you would be able to be in there this December or whenever.
Yes, we think so. So as indicated by the letter, our landlord, or the potential landlord, I should say, has signed off, knowing that this is the use that we have in mind for this space. We want, we were very transparent and said what we would want to come in for. We've not even entered into lease negotiations yet, because again, we want to respect the city and your process before we even go there. We know that it meets our square footage needs, it meets our general space setup needs. It's close, it's walkable to services such as Bridges of Hope, the Sharing Bread Soup Kitchen, downtown county services. And so in general, it, it checks all the boxes. And we know that the rent is in the neighborhood of where we need it to be. So we, we need approval that, that you would allow us to be at that space, negotiations could begin. We have a group from a local church, they're skilled and licensed contractors that are church members that have said they would come in and donate some time to do the very little bit of cosmetic changes that need to be made to the building. We've got Ann, we would need to hire some other paid staff and train them well, and, and we could open the doors.
Other questions for Jana?
Just a quick question. What sort of ground rules are there for the, for residents there? I presume basic no alcohol, things like this. What kind of ground rules?
Yep. So we have a committee that is working on some of those things, and obviously bringing Ann on board will really start digging in. Because there are things from how do you, you know, bring people in and situate and assign COTS, and what if somebody knows each other from being around town and they don't care for each other? How do you handle that? That sort of thing. So we do have rules. You know, we will, people will check in, check in their belongings. You do not get to keep your belongings on you. And you really, I mean, it's simple. We're talking bare bones. We come in, you might have a cup of coffee or a cup of oatmeal or something if you hadn't eaten. There might be some puzzles or books to read, you know, pull up a chair, relax. But then it is, it's go to sleep, lights out. We said low barrier. So for example, the, the shelter in Bemidji is very honest. They said you will have people come in intoxicated. That's just part of it. As long as they are not a danger to themselves or others. They said you let them in, they sleep it off, it's really not typically a problem. We asked the Bemidji folks, I asked them, and kind of tongue in cheek, I said, scare us. Make us not do this. You know, tell us about the worst night you've ever had at the shelter. They really couldn't tell us anything that scared us away from doing it or made us feel like we had to have high security or anything like that. Local law enforcement, Chief Ekstedt has had conversations with both Rochester and with Bemidji, and law enforcement speaks very favorably of both shelters. So we know we have a lot of rules and policies and procedures to still put in place, but we've, we've already done the, kind of dipped our toes there. So we know where we need to go. We wanted to get a director on board, so we didn't dictate everything to them. We want them to be help of, you know, building the process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Well, thank, thank you, Jana. Appreciate the presentation and the proposal. There is a hefty list of collaborative partners associated with this. Is there anyone that, and this is not a public hearing, but I'm curious, is there anyone here that is not affiliated or associated with, with the warming shelter proposal that, that has some thoughts that they'd like to share? Yes, ma'am, please come up to the podium. If you would, if you 'd state your name and your address, please.
I don't have an address.
Okay.
My name is Heidi Kane. I am a native from Brainerd, born and raised, and I've recently come back here. We are desperately in need of what she talks about, of people that are homeless, messed up, need a safe place for the cold winter months. I have been in process with trying to get a homeless shelter here for quite a few years now. I'm not affiliated with any of those up there. I, my heart goes out to the less fortunate and the homeless people. Now I am one of those homeless people. I don't have a record. I'm stable, and I believe I can contribute to this organization also. I believe it has to be run properly with rules, and some organization and law enforcement, if they're on board, they'll be the ones that get the call. I feel that even if this one doesn't go up, there needs to be room for other ones to go up, for people that can offer help to establish a safe place for them, whether it's your own home or another building, other organizations, whatever it takes. I'm still, I had my identity stolen. I have no credit now. I had outstanding credit. I cannot rent anywhere. I believe that, yes, we need to train the people that are in these facilities to run them properly and organized. But I also know that it takes people from this side of the tracks to also reach these people. And I believe that if it comes to credentials, how do you reach people on that side of the tracks if they don't have those credentials neither? So it has to be open to that, people without a high school diploma, without, say, college or whatever, them are good people also, and they can contribute to these homeless shelters. I believe that this is a step forward, and I believe they can become self-sufficient without a lot of funding, without, I think if you handed a dish pan to somebody on the street, they're going to do those dishes, and they'll do them according to what the director would have them do. I also believe they can clean the facilities when they're done and contribute their input into this community to cut the costs of overhead. So yes, here I am. I want to see one come here. I want to see people delivered. I want it to be stable and secure. You will have drug addicts and you will have alcoholics come in there. Most are compliant, and they will do what they are told to do there. I think if they're comfortable, fed a cup of coffee and maybe given a meal for that particular moment of their life will bring great results. That's all I got to say, and I'm still looking for a house. So wish me luck.
There you go. Well, good luck. Thank you very much, Heidi, for that presentation. Is there anyone else that would care to, to share perspective on that? Yes, please. If you'd state your name and address, please, for the record.
Go ahead. Go ahead. My name is Doug Arnt, 2288 Three Old Government Trail in Niswa. I'm the chief operating officer of Quinstar Investment Partners, which is our family group that actually owns the building on 371 next to Donnellinger, is where Common Goods is, is located and has been for the last 13 years. And we've, you know, had them as a tenant, and I can tell you, you know, if they, you know, continue on with what they're doing with the shelter, the, the way they've won, run Common Goods, it will be a home run. They do everything you expect and more. That's a first-class operation there. And as my wife Susan, who is also here with me, you know, we've gotten a little more involved with Bridges of Hope and are going to be, you know, both spending time and treasure and support of this project. And I, as an experienced real estate guy, developer, I would encourage you, I know you have your processes, but please do whatever you can to expedite this through your city because it's really going to fill a need. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
My name's Troy McFarland, 416 Southeast Brainerd. And I'm just here to testify, a witness, Heidi's trial. There is a housing, terrible housing crisis in this town. And it's not for lack of effort. This woman has worked her butt out trying to get a place. But with the, her identity crisis and her current score, she can't rent a house. Nobody will rent to her. She literally has no place to go. I'm fortunate enough to be able to help her out for the time being. But she wants her own place and deserves her own place. That's all I got to say. Sorry.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else that would care to speak on this? Seeing none. So I think Director Chansky, your memo proposes a couple of actions. One is to direct staff to work with our current consultants that are revising the city zoning code to provide us some sort of an option for a standard. That would probably be on a timeline, probably a February-ish, when a product would be ready for Planning Commission approval, City Council approval thereafter. Am I, is that timeline kind of working?
Correct. If we were to, if we were to do it and adjust in the new code.
And another would be to, to, to have staff direct some language that we can put into motion before the City Council for their immediate action, or immediate as in when it comes onto their agenda and the prerogative of the president. When, when, how long of a timeline does that look like? That would, again, because it's an amendment to the ordinance, that's a, a two, two hearings, is that correct?
Yeah, so, correct. So it'd have to go through, either way we do this, it has to go through the formal amendment process. If you go to the second route, which is amend the current ordinance, which based off of the desired timeline if the Planning Commission is, is willing to take this up, would be my recommendation. I think there's a way we can do a small amendment to the current ordinance to let them get going, while also simultaneously maybe going, also looking into the, putting, making sure it gets into the new ordinance as well. But it's, it would be a formal ordinance amendment, which means it does require a public hearing, and it does require two readings by the City Council before they can vote to adopt a proposed ordinance change. So depending on how that looks, traditionally, how it's been done is if the Planning Commission chooses to take this up, up tonight, come the next, next Planning Commission meeting, we have proposed ordinance language, the Planning Commission holds the public hearing, makes recommendation to City Council, two City Council meetings. Obviously, that would put this as approval by the City Council in December. And then depending on how the Planning Commission recommends this be approved, whether this is a permitted use, the interim use, the conditional use, then the group would then have to come back potentially for either interim use permit or a conditional use permit, if that's the way the, the commission chooses to recommend, which then would put you in January. There are a number of ways this process could be expedited if the commission so chooses. It could be by commission calling a special meeting in the next, before of the council meetings in November, to hold that pub, to consider that language and hold that public hearing, and then allow the council to have their two readings in November. The other option would be to direct staff to drag, to draft language and then just send it straight to the City Council without bringing it back to this, back to the Planning Commission and asking the City Council to conduct the public hearing simultaneously with their first reading. So there are some options to expedite this process if the Planning Commission so chooses.
Thank you, David. It does feel like this is a time-sensitive kind of an item, that an expediting process would be pretty, pretty helpful, I think, if that is the will of the commission to, to make that recommendation. Are there any other questions for staff or other topics that folks are thinking about?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. David, what's the fastest route? Is the fastest route the last one? You, you stated that we would, we would forego our hearing and go directly to the, the City Council. Is that the fastest route?
At this point, that would be the fastest route, as any public hearing has to be noticed 10 days. So even if I were to issue a notice tomorrow, that means the commission couldn't consider it until, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, till Monday the first.
Commission or, or council?
Well, you couldn't do, we couldn't do a public hearing.
But are you talking about the council doing or the commission doing?
Anyone doing it.
Oh, anyone doing it, okay.
So in that situation, the council could do it on November 1st. They meet on November 1st.
Okay.
Otherwise, you would potentially want to hold a special meeting yourselves.
Thank you.
But there is just enough time that we could forcibly get it on the council's agenda for Jan, November 1st, if the Planning Commission so chooses.
Excuse me, would that be for anybody that would want to start out a homeless shelter?
If, if the, if the, yeah, so the ordinance would, what they're looking for is, right now, our current ordinance does not allow for shelters at all. So if you change the ordinance, it's, it's for anybody, not just Bridges of Hope.
Okay.
Insert, depending on how it's changed.
So, David, I'm, I'm in favor of, of allowing the consultants to be thoughtful about sort of a long-term fit for this. So I'm almost of the opinion of yes, direct them to, to work something into the ordinance. But I also feel that there's some immediate action or this, this quick expedited action as an interim step. And, and, and what I'm, what I'm thinking about is, is a, an interim use approach. And it feels like an interim use could, could then be abolished at the time at which the new ordinance goes into effect. And that, that doesn't have any tails. If we play around in conditional use, I'm worried about potential tails and things that we might carry into our new ordinance that we haven't thought carefully about. But, but that feels like an interim use might be a good way to go here that allows the process, these folks to continue to develop their proposal, work with potential landlords to get a facility rolling and... work with potential landlords to get a facility rolling and an agreement in place and allows us that time to then thoughtfully work this into a longer range. I don't know if other folks have a different thought about process-wise, how we might get to where we need to go or...
So, Mr. Chair, I agree. I like the interim use approach. I agree also with kind of the expedited, of the two expedited options you laid out. David, if I could ask a question to David.
Please, Mr. Erickson.
I'll preface it, but, you know, we have, we're short several members and we do have the zoning moratorium in place. So I'm less comfortable with just directing staff to create that language. Not that I don't have confidence in staff, but sending it directly to council. I would like us as a commission to look at it before it goes to council. So I like expediting the concept, but I'm more in favor of having that special meeting. And so I don't know, David, could you run through that timeline of...
So it depends on how, if you wanted this, you could, there is an option where the commission could review the language and it still go to the council on November first. We just notice it like tomorrow that the council's going to have a public hearing on November first to consider amending the ordinance to allow for warming shelters. That's the notice. The packet for that meeting doesn't go out until November twenty-eighth. October, sorry, October twenty-eighth, so next Thursday. So if the commission has availability and as long as we have seventy-two hours and ahead of time to notice that meeting, you could hold a special meeting to review language prior to going into the packet on October twenty-eighth. So you could hold a meeting next, really would be probably ideally next Tuesday or Wednesday. If you have availability and are willing to do that. Otherwise, we would be pushing it. The council in November meets on the first and the fifteenth.
What are the next scheduled meetings of the planning, meetings and workshops of the planning commission?
After today, you do not meet again until November seventeenth, which is after the city council meeting, the regular city council, both regular city council meetings in November.
Is there, is there a workshop in the interim that...
There is only a city council workshop.
City council, there's not a joint workshop?
There's not.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, those are just my thoughts too. I'd be curious to hear what others. Like, and we do, we do have a quorum, so...
Mr. Chair, what are your thoughts on interim use language or what are you proposing for an interim use until we get the new zoning code in?
I don't have any specific language, you know, other than we could make it in general, a, an interim use, period. Without details, it would still kind of link up and, you know, staff could come up with the details. But if it's an interim use, like we did with the greenhouse kind of a thing, it can, it can be. You have to apply for it.
If you can, Mr. Chair. James, can you switch over to my screen, please? So I actually pulled, I was able to dig up, they referenced the Bemidji Shelter, Bemidji's ordinance for their warming shelters. And this is essentially what their ordinance is. They do it by doing interim use permit as well. This first section is just kind of a purpose statement. Land use requirement stating where it's allowed. Talking about, you know, again, some restrictions about where they're allowed, that they have to meet building code, building safety code requirements, sign requirements. They have to get interim use permit. And that's about all the requirements that they have in their code for warming shelters. So we could go something simple, that route to start, to get them going. And then to your point, Mr. Chair, by doing interim use, we could then actually, as part of the new code, get more into depth for the new code. And then if you, when you issue the warming shelter interim use at a later date, you could have a, just an end date of that interim use, maybe the, either when the new code is adopted or at the end of the winter season, to let them get through the winter season and they'd have to come back next summer to get a new interim use based off of new code, new, or whatever it is, conditional use or whatever, based off of the new code requirements. So that's a way you can get them going now, but still look at the issue for the long term as well simultaneously.
Ms. Whitwood?
Mr. Chansky, I'm, I don't remember. Do they have to fill out a permit application and then have, then have a meeting after that to approve an interim use?
Correct. So it would have to be, the code would have to be amended first to make it an interim use and then they'd have to apply for an interim use.
Okay. So I, we would still have to amend the code?
Yes.
Why would you not just call this a hotel? That's already a permitted use in that zone.
In that zone?
Definition of a hotel is an establishment offering lodging accommodations. You do it right now.
That was, Mr. Chair, that was one of the thoughts going through my head was if the, if the people using the shelter went into the shelter and registered like they were going into a hotel and then the tab was picked up by the donating agencies, it would fall under a hotel use or could, could fall under a hotel use, which is already permitted.
With, can I just speak?
Yeah, yeah, if you, go ahead.
Okay.
Maybe at the microphone so others can hear.
With that hotel thing where they give you the voucher for the night to go to a hotel, why couldn't that be put into a fund that's going to help pay the facility their rent or whatever? Their overhead would be too. It could, you know, it could go into something like that. Those people couldn't pocket that money or have somebody else took up the tab. Do you see what I'm saying? So if you pay sixty dollars for a hotel night, they stay one night, that sixty bucks could probably accommodate more than one person in that shelter. So if they had to have two nights in a hotel, that's a hundred and twenty bucks that could go into a pot that would feed that facility and distribute that money that way. That way, there is no waste.
Thank you. So Director Chansky, you've got a comment?
I just want to comment quick on the hotel thing. I think Janet could also speak to this. Just to clarify, what happened last fall was Crow Wing County, I believe, using CARES Act funds to pay for those vouchers. In this program that they're recommending, the county is not paying Bridges of Hope to do this. So there is no money coming in from other entities. You know, they are receiving grant funding and such. Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, there's no funding coming from governmental entities for Bridges of Hope to do this.
Not as of now. However, I'm curious about what Mr. Marone is saying is how, is our, are we essentially running a supervised complimentary hotel of sorts for people who have nowhere else to go? Could that be allowed? I'm not sure. That's very interesting.
Ms. Chair, Chuck Marone, six-one-six North Fourth. Don't, don't want to step on any toes, but, because I'm not here for this. I'm here for someone else. Obviously, I sat where you guys were for a long time. You're, the definite, there's a difference between like what it is legally, like what we describe it as and how it would be funded and all that, and the zoning code. Zoning code's not like an administrative code where if we call it a hotel, that's what it is in terms of how the county would fund it or how you guys would get funding or what you would do. We define hotel their own way. And we say a hotel is an establishment offering lodging, accommodations, including provisions for meals to the general public on a daily or weekly basis. It goes on to describe meeting in conference halls. And then it says, "or other uses of similar character." A hotel becomes an extended stay hotel when the guests stay longer than thirty days. I can appreciate why you would want like some clarity in the ordinance on like a specific use. If you're going through a process of updating the zoning code, you could do that, you know, and like write a specific provision. But if you're all inclined to get this moving, which seems reasonable and rational, you could make a motion to say, we've heard the testimony and this described, it seems like a hotel for us. Interpret the ordinance as this being a hotel and direct the staff to go about it that way.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah.
So, David, this, the hotel idea is attractive because it exists. I, I, I feel differences in, in the fact that, you know, it's, there's a reason it's a warming shelter. You know, it's not quite a stay, if you would, and you don't get, you, your goods are checked away and so on and so forth. You don't have access to that. It feels a little bit, David.
So if we were not updating our code right now, I probably would not recommend going that route. However, as we are updating our code right now, the commission has that opportunity of, one of the issues again we have right now is there's, because it's not, it's not spoken of at all in our ordinance, we don't even have a definition of it. And if you look in Bemidji's ordinance, they have like five different definitions to cover themselves, which means moving forward in the new ordinance, you could call, say, for, for the time being, we're going to, we're going to say it falls under the current codes ordinance, a definition of hotel. And then in the new code, clearly define it, make it a use, and then they can move forward. The question I would have would be from the, from I guess you call a land use law perspective of, wouldn't it make them a legal non-conforming moving forward that would not make them have to come back for interim use permit or whatever the council or the planning commission chooses to make that use? That I would have to seek counsel on. If that would open up that, you know, can we make them come back six months from now and get an interim use permit after we've called them a hotel under the current code? I'm not sure.
So the proposed location is, am I correct, that's a B-four?
Correct.
So there might, there might be a couple of ways to, to package this for, for, you know, November first. You know, one, one might be as simple as it's, it's, we're going to consider it a hotel use and until such time as it's defined differently in our ordinance, which could be, could be.
And simply by defining it separately in the new ordinance might take away that non-conforming piece? Again, I'd have to get guidance.
Or the alternative would be to then offer, offer an interim use amendment to the, to the ordinance for B-four. That gets this off the ground. And so, you know, that would tighten some of the timelines if city council would, would consider the hotel approach. You know, you could, you could pretty much end the public hearing process at that point in time on interim use piece and, and a way the applicant goes on getting things rolling this season. Otherwise, you're, you know, I think, running the math here, we're probably mid-December, allowing time for an ordinance amendment process to pass, an application to be submitted and be heard. Mr. Erickson?
I guess I'm less comfortable with the hotel concept. I like the track that we were on with the interim use. The petitioner hasn't called themselves a hotel. They're not calling themselves a hotel in what was presented. So I, I see how the suggestion would work to expedite, but I'm not sure. They haven't presented themselves as a hotel. So for us to just say, looks like a hotel to me, and it's a warming shelter. I think that's, and I think neighbors, members of the public might view that as disingenuous if, if we see this petition and then just say it's a hotel simply to expedite it. And in addition to that, I, I'm in favor of expediting it, but I don't think we need to rush, rush this through. I think we need to take our time a little bit and follow a little bit of the process. Just by doing this interim use, expediting it to the fact of using the interim use, we're going to be making more progress on this issue than we have in the past twenty years. So I guess I'll pump the brakes just a little bit.
Mr. Chansky, excuse me, Heidi.
Oh, sorry.
So if I may, just a couple of comments on that, Mr. Chair. The first is on the hotel issue, as I know City Attorney Engel will say, when it comes to the zoning code, especially any definitions within the zoning code, the zoning code is legislative in nature in that it is up to the city council. So the city council has authority over that. Due to the fact that how it is worded right now, as Mr. Marone read where it says, "and other similar uses", I think there's some flexibility if the council chose to go down that route. I think, first of all, either way this goes, it should go to the city council for that decision. So an option could be, as well, if the commission wanted to, would be kind of on November first, present the council with both options. Say we have notified, you know, here's the issue. Planning commission considered it. Option A is amend the code and make it very specific. Option B is, you know, stretch the code language a little bit in the short term to allow it to just happen right away and we amend the code, we create specifics in the new code. We would still have language, we would still notice a public hearing so they can choose either option. And then we leave it up to the city council, I guess. That, I put it back to the commission, that is an option if you're interested in doing that. Otherwise, you could just make, you know, one recommendation too. So you could, I'm just going back to, you could make, pretty much give council both options if you chose to.
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
I'll say too, as the liaison, obviously from the council, I think they're going to want direction, not, I guess, options.
A menu?
Not a menu.
Well, I can speak for the holiday, yeah. And that, that could never go through because it was a hotel. You know, when that was up for sale and whatever, it was denied. So I think being a warming shelter is, and it's not a permanent situation. So, I mean, that's just a holding tank for one night.
Thank you. So, so if I can go back to, to planning commission process to keep, keep the November first city council item on the agenda, we would be able to have a planning commission meeting prior to that to review the draft. That wouldn't be a public hearing. We would ask the council to do the public hearing, but just...
Yes, due to the, due to the requirement, the ten-day noticing requirement, the planning commission could not hold the public hearing before November first.
And...
It'd be strictly meaning, in a special meeting context, to review language.
And the workshop is on the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth is when the city council packet goes out. So we'd need to meet prior to the twenty-eighth.
And the city council workshop is...
The city council, their regular meeting is November first.
The workshop, I'm thinking...
They're meeting on November eighth in workshop to discuss the commercial standards for the zoning code and American Rescue Plan funds.
That's November eighth?
That's November eighth.
Okay, that's, okay. So we don't have a, an option in there? Okay, so something before the twenty-eighth. If we wanted to review that language before we get into the packet.
Correct. The council, I will suggest also, so the commission is aware, if you're looking at times and dates, the council does have a workshop on the twenty-fifth at six o'clock. So if you're looking to meet on the twenty-fifth, the council is meeting on the twenty-fifth.
That's, that's what I'm fishing for.
Yes.
Is to say, could we muster a quorum for the twenty-fifth to review language if you feel you could have language ready on the twenty-fifth?
Are you looking at meeting before the council meets at six?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Was there, is there an intent to then, are you wanting to bring this to the council and the... I guess I'm confused why we need to meet on the, before council meets on the twenty-fifth.
To review the language was, I think, what I heard Mr. Erickson's request. An opportunity for the commission to be able to review before, before it was presented to city council. So I'm...
But it's not going to be presented to city council until November first.
Regardless, Mr. Chair, I could meet the twenty-fifth. I'm available the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, or twenty-seventh. So it wouldn't need to be the twenty-fifth.
So the earliest this goes to before council is November first?
Even.
Erickson?
Well, yeah, I think what David's saying is even though the council meets for a workshop on the 25th, there would be no action taken that night.
No, yeah, they don't take any actions. And it's not what they've discussed of having discussing that night. It's not what's been noticed for that meeting. For all those special meetings, they have to notice specific things that wasn't noticed for that meeting.
So 25th, 26th, 27th? Do we have some similar availability or?
I'm not available the 25th until after 7 o'clock. 26th, 27th? 6th and 7th, it should be fine.
Flexibility on those.
I believe I do.
So maybe, David, what we could do is if you could maybe send a doodle poll to the commission here and we can lock in a date there to review.
And I'll send that out first thing in the morning tomorrow. Again, there has to be 72 hours notice before any meeting. So I'll get that out right away tomorrow. So with that, I guess what I'd be looking for at this point is the plan, what the planning commission's direction, a formal motion from the planning commission to direct. Are you directing staff to draft language and then send it to the city council and ask them to do a public hearing on it? Are you asking, what is the formal direction from the planning commission? Is what I'd be looking for at this time.
And I, just to summarize, I think, the conversation we've had, we're really looking to have staff direct interim use language for a warming shelter. And perhaps we can narrow the districts down even perhaps to B four. And there are elements that were flashed there from other city language ordinances that would probably be a source for that. So I think that's what we're asking them to do and have that ready for the city council packet on October 28th. So anyone care to make that motion?
So move.
Erickson, is there a second?
I will second.
Goram's second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign? Okay. So Ms. Shogren, I think we're sort of on the path to getting this at least before city council. They are the ultimate deciders and they're gonna be managing the process of this in that expedited format. So thank you for bringing your proposal to us tonight. All right. So with that, I think we have our next item on the agenda is item 7B, request to amend tiny home regulations to accommodate supportive housing village. So Director Chansky, could you queue this one up for us?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. I think, so let me put that one up here. And James, you can flop back, switch back over to yours. The city board received a request from Vicky Kinney on behalf of my neighbor to love coalition to consider amending the zoning code allow for tiny homes under 500 square feet to support the development of a supporting housing village. You have her letter in your packet. I really have nothing else to add at this time other than just letting the request come before you.
Very good, thank you. And so Ms. Kinney, is that tools before us now?
Yes.
If you'd introduce yourself, please, and give us your address.
Sure. My name is Vicky Kinney. I live at 8660 Fernmont Road in Lake Shore.
Can you tell us a bit about your proposal? What you're asking the commission to do tonight?
Tonight, I'm just asking that you change to your ordinance and say include tiny homes and to make an amendment, include tiny homes. So, I mean, eventually we want to do a housing project. But that's probably will come later if we can find property in Brainerd. But just in case we can, we'd like to take this first step. So and the reasons, I gave you kind of a little printout. The reasons why, four major points. The first one is we have a tremendous problem with work shortage. We all know that. And the Department of Employment and Economic did is saying that our aging population is much more than other areas that have similar population as this. And our 25 to 39-year-old ages, workforce ages, is like 30% lower than other areas of similar population across the nation. So we have a lot of aging population that's, you know, gonna be retiring and we don't have enough younger people to fill those jobs. And the problem, it's not about living in Brainerd because it's beautiful here. We've got all the resources and it's, you know, getting a really quite cute charming downtown area. But our big problem is housing. We just do not have enough affordable housing. So we're not gonna be able to attract more workers and more people to come to this area if there's no place to live. And affordable homes for people, especially those who are just kind of starting out or maybe those lower income jobs. So and the second point was attracting younger people because some people like more of a minimalist type living. They don't need the big houses and they're more about adventure and going places on the weekend. So they're not really looking for, some of the younger people aren't really looking for big houses, big yards. So it's a positive thing for them. Also for aging population that aren't really wanting to go into retirement communities, but they still want to downsize. So it meets a need for them as well. The idea of homeownership, you know, nowadays, especially this last year, housing prices have gone up so high. So allowing for a tiny home villages, neighborhoods or planned unit developments allows people for homeownership as well because many of these homes can be built and sold on property probably for under $100,000 and still could accommodate a small family. And of course, homeownership is much more better for an environment and community than a lot of rental properties. So it does solve that problem as well. And then, of course, the last one is employers right now are just competing, you know, adding another dollar an hour to try to, you know, steal employees from other companies in the area. And so this kind of problem has been going on. So this could really help employees stay in jobs that they like and they value because they can afford to because their housing is less expensive and that competition is not gonna be so problematic. So there are a lot of tiny home. I hate to even the word tiny home. It kind of bugs me, but that's what they call it in the state. Lot of villages throughout the country that are quite beautifully done. So just very cute little neighborhoods and, you know, somehow clubhouses and all over the country, you can see these popping up. Some are just pocket neighborhoods, but many of them are very beautifully planned developments. And I just feel like there's a need for smaller homes in a development like that. Our project, of course, is going to be supportive housing in phase one. And that's addressing the homelessness issue. We're kind of taking this step two after the shelter. But we'd also like to eventually, phase two, just provide low-income housing that could be for sold, you know, sold for people as well to bring revenue, of course, to the city as well. That's a lot in a nutshell. Go ahead and ask questions if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Kinney. You know, your proposal to support your request is more on this clustering and sort of a development of tiny homes versus individual tiny homes. But you see the barrier in the ordinance now is the size of the house that is allowed in, or at least that the lower end size of houses is a barrier for the plan that you want to do.
Correct, yep. Initially, when I first spoke with David, I just wanted, I was hoping that there would be an informal meeting just to talk with whoever is available to just give some guidance on what we should be looking for and how we can make this work. But it sounded like it needs to be more in a formal setting. So because we don't have land, I kind of skipped past that and thought, okay, first things first, we do need an ordinance change. And when I heard that you were in that process, that perfect timing to change it. Because it would be easier if it was already allowed in your ordinances then to come later if we did find property in Brainerd. We're also looking in other towns as well. Then we could, it would be easier to do a planned unit development if it was already, the language is already there. That's my rationale for starting with this. So tonight, it's really more about just that ordinance change.
In your phase two, leading to ownership, do you imagine that model also being based on these these kinds of designs of a platted neighborhood? Are you thinking about individual small homes interspersed throughout?
Well, that would really be up to you. I would think it would be difficult for the public to allow, you know, small homes be putting on properties next to a large home just because of property values. That could be an issue. I would love to see pocket neighborhoods maybe built like this or maybe more rural areas too where somebody could put in a smaller home. But I'm thinking the most likely, I think we probably would be developments that are specifically tailored for neighborhoods of similar homes. That just seems to be, that's how a city develops where certain neighborhoods, certain areas have similar type of housing. But it's really, that would be up to your discretion.
Other questions for Ms. Kinney?
And the tiny home definition, by the way, it's actually 400 square feet and under. Although if you were to amend your ordinance to even just allow any kind of smaller home to be built, that would be great. But we specifically would like the tiny home language so that we can build under appendix Q, under the building code.
Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of questions.
Chair, go on.
And would the people, would they be on a path to ownership? Would they own the house? Would they own the land?
In phase two, it would be different. Phase two would be open to anybody that would need, you know, that would qualify, that could possibly afford, that's looking for home. So those with lower income housing, that would be separate from the supportive housing that we're wanting to do. So, you know, truthfully, phase two is just more serve an additional need to the city. Because, you know, we are presenting in Pequot tomorrow. One of the questions I had is, how does this benefit us? You know, to have, you know, a community like this. And so then we thought, well, okay, we could develop small, you know, low-income housing neighborhoods for sell, for sale that would benefit then for property tax for the city. So it's kind of more of a meeting their need for low-income housing and a benefit to them. But my main goal is really wanting the supportive housing initially.
So they wouldn't be owning the house initially?
In phase one, it would be owned by the nonprofit. Phase one is a supportive housing. And so it's taking the people that are from the shelter to move them into supportive permanent housing. So the idea is not to keep people comfortably homeless. It's to end homelessness.
Maybe like a renter?
It would be a rental, yep, with no lease. But it would be a rental. They're able to live there permanently as long as they follow a few basic rules.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Erickson?
So the supportive housing, what I see the list of services are kind of made available. Is that handled by the nonprofit? How are those services provided? What kind of?
Okay. The services will be provided by the nonprofit, but also we're gonna be working in conjunction with all the local services in town. So I've had a lot of contact with each one individually. And ideally, we would like to be able to provide services onsite. So that way, well, you know, obviously have therapy onsite. But for social services, instead of, you know, tracking people over to the offices, having a social worker come, meet with them right there, fill out paperwork and those kind of things. Just to make it a little bit easier, especially for those that have difficulty filling out paperwork and forms. But yes, try to have most everything onsite. But we'll be working in collaboration with all the local organizations.
Thank you. And then a follow-up?
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
You talked about kind of some basic rules. Can you elaborate on what would be required in that regard? Similar to the last?
Sure, yep. Everybody has to pay rent. So that's a requirement. Part of this whole plan of supportive housing is the only way really out of poverty is employment. So some people, of course, will have, you know, disability and that will be covered. But those who don't, we'll have a workforce training program, work with local employers to get them connected with a liaison person. So if there's problems with them, you know, employment or issues that we could still work with them to try to keep them employed and solve problems with them. So that would be the main basic role. For those who are in between and can't afford housing or just a problem, maybe they're in between jobs or an issue, then we would provide work onsite. So they would still be having to work and they could get credits that would then cover their rent. So people have to have to be involved and have to, it's, you know, it's not a handout. So that would be the main role. And of course, any basic laws. So there's no drugs, there's no violence. So any laws that would be, you know, in any neighborhood has to be followed.
Thanks.
I think as, when you start talking about bringing services to the residents of this concept community, I'm wondering how closely that ends up getting us to like group homes and that aspect and whether we, you know, and whether we get tangled up. So if we're gonna do something in a new ordinance, maybe we need to think about, you know, the key words I'm hearing there. And if it's not our intention to weave those together, just make sure we have a clear path for each of those options.
And if I may, Mr. Chair? Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair. I think what Ms. Kinney's really looking for tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, is really is, is this something willing, the planning commission is willing to undertake? I think this is something we could definitely, based off of, I think, the timeline that I'm hearing, undertake in the new code. I just need to expedite this and get this done the next month. As she's identified, the biggest issue is here is that right now our current ordinance limits it at 750 square feet. Obviously, there are other things to consider here with how it would ultimately function. And I think that's a separate issue to address in the code. And a future code would be, I think there's two questions here. One, do we want, do we want structures that are smaller than 750 square feet? A, and then there's the B, which is the supportive housing piece of how is that in our code? Is it specifically called out or not? Or how would we want any regulations about that? So there's kind of those two pieces to this equation that kind of be brought for you. And I think tonight we're looking for, do you want to direct staff to work with our consultants with Swanson and Haskamp to work on drafting language to be put in the new code to address these two separate issues?
And I see the same two issues. And, you know, as it, you know, for her, for the concept where she's wanting to go, the tiny home removes one barrier, but then she has this community piece. And does our, will our future ordinance have that? So, you know, if she's, I think, correctly looking at the planned unit development piece of our current ordinance, whatever that looks like in Brainerd ordinance 2.0, you know, will that and can that accommodate this kind of a use? Or what guidance do we have for her as she thinks about her business model going forward from here?
And that's definitely, I think, those are answers that I would say Jennifer Haskamp and Mike Lamb would absolutely have.
Right, so if we can present, here's sort of the concept here. So there's one of these is the size and they can be salted in neighborhoods. They can be clustered in some sort of a community or a. Forget the term you used.
Neighborhood, yep, or village or neighborhood.
Yeah, village approach. And then the other is if you wanted to do sort of this transitional supportive housing that leads to ownership, make sure we have the tools in place or at least some guidance from our consultants on how to do that. That's it. So those are the pieces I hear as well. Any other thoughts or questions or issues of discussion?
Yeah, no, I see the same two issues. But even on the second one, I think too, like, how is that different from a single-family resident needing therapy services? You know, so I see it as a, you know, does that kind of disentangle it from that whole conversation too? How is it different from someone who's renting here and needing services? How is that any different from any other resident? So maybe that second issue is potentially a non-issue. But the question is, yes, have staff look into it and I guess help make that determination.
So if I may, Mr. Chair? I think the simplest direction that we would, I'd be looking for tonight would just be a motion to directing staff to work with Swanson and Haskamp to explore these two issues and draft regulations to then, that would then come before the planning commission for consideration as part of the new code.
So is there amongst the commission an interest in pursuing tiny homes in our evolving ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I would say yes, there is. The whole idea of 750 feet, that's the minimum?
That's currently the minimum. As I have my, in the packet, you can go down to 500 square feet, but only on a nonconforming lot that existed part of 1989.
Well, probably 50% of the houses in my neighborhood Well, probably fifty percent of the houses in my neighborhood in beautiful southwest would be non-conforming. I live in a, my house is about five hundred and eighty square feet, and so I think the whole size matter is just kind of ridiculous, so. I, I, tiny house is great. Obviously, it's a little more complex when you bring in the community aspect of it. So, um, I, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to pursue this and, uh, with the, with the upcoming, uh, as part of the, um, uh, the new ordinance, to work with Haskamp and Swanson to develop, to develop ideas. That's my motion.
Motion table is there second?
Second.
Woodward's second. Any discussion on that motion?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, um, working with staff, um, I'd just like to mention to Mr. Chansky when he's making his recommendations that I think it would work well to include warming house, um, sober house and supportive housing, all in kind of the same flow.
That's.
We're addressing these issues. It's, it's a progressive movement through that recovery system, and I think making all of the code easy to find and having a nice flow through all three of those issues would help move members of our community in need forward. Making it easy to find in the code.
Chair. You know, I, 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 I agree with what you're saying. I'm, I'm wondering if, I, I don't know that we want to piggyback that on this, this motion. What I'm hearing though is, is sort of some.
I think it's implied in the motion that it's. I, I'm not making an amendment to the motion, I'm just saying that since we have directed staff to work on, um, warming, so, since we're working on the warming house issue, we're going forward with sober house regulations for the, the next zoning code. Um, it makes sense to put all three of them together.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Erickson.
I don't know if that needs to be included.
Well, I agree with ease of use, but, um, just with the difficulties we ran into with the sober home in the Federal Fair Housing Act, I would say it may be good to, are you talking about keeping them separate? Cause lumping them together, I think, would then entangle these with the.
No, not lumping them together, but at least locating them next to each other in the code.
My concern would be the Federal Fair Housing Act and then lumping tiny homes in with that, or this village concept.
Yeah, I think tiny house regulations would be listed, the, the size of homes is listed separately, and then.
Again, Mr. Chair, again, as I see it from this motion too, is these are two separate items that we'll be addressing. One would be the tiny home issue first, or not necessarily first, but tiny homes is one issue, supportive housing is another issue.
And hopefully I'll be back for that, if we can find land.
While they go, while they go together in the code, it'll be addressed separately.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, um, and again, that motion is to direct staff to, uh, work with the consultants to develop, uh, recommendations for tiny homes in our revised ordinance. Did I summarize your motion?
Yes, you did.
Alrighty, and then, uh, with that, um, we've had discussion, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And, and Ms. Woodward, I just want to go back and pick up that, that piece. You know, I think, I think if we're, if, if we want to do a, a motion here just to, to, you know, kind of make sure that we're addressing those other pieces, or having, having the consultants provide us some guidance on those other pieces, I would certainly entertain that.
The warming house, sober house and supportive housing?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just to, just to say, you know, if, if we, if, if we want to direct staff to kind of ask the consultants to help us package those things up in ways that make sense, I think that'd be open to a motion, um, onto that effect.
You can do the motion if you want to. I don't think the motion is necessary. I think I've received the direction that I need.
Yeah.
But if you want to do the motion, you may, but it doesn't include it's necessary.
Are you comf, are you comfortable that staff was?
I think our staff will do a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Ms. Kinney.
Thank you.
All right, and, uh, so that concludes that item, and I think now we're at old business. Highway two ten discussion and, uh, David, can you set us up for that and?
Yep, absolutely, just very quickly. So, um, during your September fifteenth meeting, uh, the commission held a discussion about the proposed highway two ten reconstruction project. You went through the lay, the proposed layout, um, the commission held discussion, had some comments and questions, and during that, um, after that, we did ask, uh, Mr. Luke Wesler, who is, um, joining us virtually tonight to come, um, and just have a discussion with the commission, looking, um, and, and just having, I think, what they're looking at, and Luke can introduce himself as well, but looking at really just here to hear the commission's comments, um, and, and what, you know, you, your comments you have, maybe some concerns you have, um, and then Luke can also take some reaction to that, maybe make some comments back about what you're hearing. Um, with that, otherwise, I'd kind of like to thank Luke for hanging with us for the last hour. I'm gonna encourage you, Mr. Chair, to turn it over to, to Luke and let him kind of introduce himself.
Very good. Thank you, David, and, uh, has Luke been provided some of the gist of our conversation, um, at our September?
I've given him some kind of a, a little, a, a high overview, but not all the nitty gritty details. I think it would help for, my thought was, for him to hear it individually from the commission itself, um, then he can react and, and kind of have that conversation with you tonight.
Sounds great. Well, welcome, Luke. Thank you for your patience while we worked through and reshuffled our agenda. So I appreciate you being here tonight. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and maybe, um, go from there.
You're not.
Uh-oh.
Are you unmuted, James? I'm saying it's the speakers.
We're working on our sound checks, and, and Luke, maybe, you can, you can hear us, correct, with the nod, yep, okay, so we're gonna work on hearing you next.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there. Do that again.
Okay. Can you hear me?
US Weekend, thank you very much, Luke.
All right, I can hear you, so that's good.
Two elements of a conversation.
Yes, yeah. Sorry I can't be there in person, but, uh, our, our, uh, organization prefers that we meet virtually if possible, so I appreciate you guys setting this up and, and have the technology to meet, uh, virtually, so, uh, we'll, we'll make it work as much, best as we can. So, um, yeah, my name is Luke Wesler. I'm the project manager with, uh, two ten, um, the Washington Street project here, which is slated for, uh, twenty twenty-five construction at this point. And yeah, um, David, uh, told me you guys had a discussion about this project in, kind of in depth, um, um, at your previous meeting here, and so, um, just wanted to come and, um, and, uh, talk to you guys and kind of get your verbal feedback about this project, um, for this. And, and I'm, I'm pretty sure you guys all seen the slides and, and the presentations, some of you seen the city council presentations or at the chamber, so, kind of seen the concepts and all of that, um, so, um, if there's a certain thing we want to start at, or kind of just, uh, update me on your thoughts, concerns, um, that'd be good.
Thanks, Luke. It might be helpful just to kind of maybe, uh, inform us about where you are in your process timeline as far as, um, uh, input and, and, and where you're at in processing that?
Yep, yep. So are we just, uh, this is our second round of engagement that we did here, uh, end of August, uh, and we closed it up in, um, September. Obviously, uh, the project is continuing to be developed, and, you know, I, I take engagement calls, talk to people throughout the whole timeframe of this project. It's just, this, that was the official, you know, um, second round of engagement that was advertised and everything. And so, um, the first round was back in Thanksgiving, um, twenty twenty-one, uh, November, December, twenty twenty-one, where we just had the
Twenty twenty.
Survey, kind of online survey, um, and then, like I say, the second round was just recently here, you know, around Labor Day, um, twenty. Yeah, twen, yeah, twenty twenty was November, December twenty twenty, now, yeah, today, Labor Day twenty twenty-one is our second, second, uh, round, so. Um, so now, we're, we're, uh, compiling all that, uh, putting some responses to that, um, and, and we're, hopefully in the next month or so, we'll, we'll, uh, post those comments we've got from that, uh, round of engagement, uh, out on the, the website for people to look, um, look at and review. And at the same time, we're gonna be reviewing those comments and, and the data, we're, we're still, um, um, taking from the project and, and compiling all that, and putting a more of a detailed two D lead layout together for, uh, a third round of engagements, which will happen this winter sometime, probably after the holidays is, is my guess, January, uh, February possibly. So that's, um, that round of engagement will be a little more detailed discussion on, on some of the, um, layout elements, uh, and, or accesses and, and turn lanes and, and stuff like that. And from that round of engagement, we're hoping to get a good direction on this project, um, to bring to the city council for municipal consent after that, which would hopefully be, um, this late winter, early spring, uh, after that, if everything goes smoothly.
Pretty good, thank you. So, um, you know, maybe David, you, you kind of played the high elements of our conversation. Last month, the, the key issues that came out of that were sort of, what do we, how do we get the trail crossing?
Mm-hmm, so I think, Luke, the biggest things, again, just to rehash, what I think the commission is looking, was looking at, um, again, from a, a, a higher level. I mean, and I think, Mr. Chair also, as Luke said, next round will also be even, even more detail. But I think some of the concerns or, or, or is, how do we balance, um, or how is, how is MinDOT one planning on balancing the, that, the pedestrian experience, ease of pedestrians, pedestrian safety with the business access piece? And then there was some awesome question about regarding, obviously, one of the biggest pieces of this puzzle that you know, is the, the, um, Mill Avenue, highway two ten, highway twenty-five intersection. And how that, the, the potential layouts play with pedestrian crossing, um, and specifically with potential of the future connection with the, uh, Cayuna Lake State, uh, State Trail coming in there off of twenty-five? How does that work? Um, kind of just get MinDOT's, I guess, feel from that? And I think from there, Mr. Chair, I'll leave it back to the commission, kind of, those are mostly your concerns, specific things that you had. But I think those are the main things that the commission, um, wanted to discuss tonight.
So, uh, you know, Luke, do you have some initial responses to, to sort of those, those, um, broader concerns about? And maybe what, what MinDOT's thoughts are on, on, you know, safely, uh, moving people across Washington at these key nodes, um, you know, uh, again, that, uh, that East Brainerd area by the, the East Brainerd Mall and, and sort of this more, um, Sixth, Sixth Street, Fourth Street, uh, areas, and, and generally, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's definitely a, a balancing act with, with, uh, the pedestrians and the vehicular movements. As we learned from the first survey, um, you know, you know, vehicles, you know, are traveling through this corridor fairly efficiently. There's not too much of a problem at, at this point. Um, and it's working fairly well. There could be some improvements, um, but we found out with the pedestrian, um, bicycling route, probably need more improvement along this corridor, and that's probably possibly why you don't see as many, um, pedestrians through here. There is narrow sidewalks. Sometimes there's, you know, no sidewalks in a few areas, um, but, um, and then, yeah, the big response that we've had is, is, is crossing that, you know, it's, it's, uh, we've, we've heard, uh, from this last round engagement is, is, you know, two ten Washington Street is kind of a barrier from north and south. And so we are gonna be looking at that in detail, how we, you know, help pedestrian crossing through there. Obviously, it's, it's tough with, you know, on the west side of that, uh, central segment closer to the bridge. We're, we're, we're moving about thirty-five thousand cars a day in that area. And then, you know, over by East Brainerd Mall, it's a little lighter traffic, uh, going east of there is about, you know, ten thousand cars a day. But it's, it's a variable amount of traffic through there, um, and as everybody experienced, you know, walking that corridor, trying to cross that corridor, um, you typically want to use the signals, um, uh, to cross that. That's kind of the, the main thing. Um, there has been talk about separated grade crossings. We, we, you know, the, you could, you could put a skywalk above, above Washington Street, uh, that's kind of beyond the scope of the project we're looking at right now. We, we can put a dollar amount to that, um, but that's, that's, that's like a separate project that would be needed, need to be initiated between the, the city and, and the state and, and a lot of other, uh, partners on that, uh, thing. But with this project, we are looking possibly at under crossing, uh, under the, the east side of the, the Washington Street Bridge. There is a lot of more developments to come on that, um, but that is probably the more economical, um, route possibly to go on this project, whether or not, uh, it can come to fruition, we'll have to see, um, as we dig into it a little more.
I, can you, can you back up? What, what did you just mention about the Washington Street Bridge? Luke, could you, could you describe that to me, please?
Yeah, so, as part of, part of, uh, our getting pedestrians across this, um, corridor, we, we want to look separated. Response was there want to be a separated grade crossing, and the location that we saw the best fit would be under Washington Street, uh, Bridge, uh, the east thing by Dairy Queen there. That was kind of, kind of proposed a little bit by, um, the city of Brainerd with that East River Walk Trail that, to, to tie into that, uh, possible thing. Uh, so we're gonna look at it with this project, um, but there's a lot of details and, and the costs, components of, of, who pays what on that, or is the city versus MinDOT, um, has to come into play and everything, and so that's just, we're gonna start looking at that and, uh, see where that can, can go right now for, uh, separated grade pedestrian crossing.
I want to follow up on that. Are you, are you saying that we're gonna hear about that this year or down the line? I'm not hearing any specifics here.
Well, hopefully, uh, we'll hopefully have that iron out, some of, some of the details ironed out by this next round of engagement, as far as, you know, what that would look like and the cost.
Again, at, by the end of the year, are we gonna hear numbers?
Uh, that'd be with the second round engagement, it was probably January, February, possibly.
Is this before we give municipal consent or after we give municipal?
Yes, yes, that'd be before, uh.
Okay.
We, we'd want to know that information, if it's in the project or not in the project, and what are the costs, who's paying what, yep.
That helps.
Luke, you also, when we were talking about the bridge, um, I believe, I, I didn't get this in the packet, but you provided us with a, with an updated concept of what the bridge is. Do you just want to explain what kind of, what MinDOT has looked at on the updated bridge concept with the, with the barrier walls?
Yeah, um, so we just had recent developments, um, on the, the Mississippi River Bridge. We had the concept of essentially taking that median and narrowing up it into a four-foot median in this, in the middle of the bridge, and then widening the sidewalk out to eleven-foot walk, um, was kind of the, the concept. We're doing a, um, a parallel bridge study with this study right now, and, and part of that study is, uh, uh, looking at the structure of this bridge and how long it'll last, and what work can we put in, or, you know, what, um, what project can we do with this bridge to make it last twenty, thirty years and not have to replace it here in five or ten years? Getting the best bang for our dollar on, on that structure, and so, they're looking at doing a bridge loading, um, and, and that design analysis on that bridge, and, uh, we've been working with them, and so, one of the, um, things that came up is that, um, far as some of the conditions for them to inspect the bridge and everything, um, and, and just utilize, a sidewalk, we have to actually have a ten-foot sidewalk if we're essentially, essentially, um, going to, um, be able to inspect the bridge, and, and some of the loading issues that, that's concerning in parts, we've put that much concrete on the outside of that bridge, being it was widened in the early eighties, and there's, there's not much of a, uh, support on the outside of that bridge because of the, the widening that was done. And so, the other option that came. And so the other option that came up that we ran, just recently ran through MinDOT and some of the city staff was putting barrier up between the sidewalk and the driving lanes. And so pedestrians going on that bridge would, it would be like about a nine foot width that they could utilize for walking and biking. But then they have about a foot and a half jersey barrier, you might, might call it, between them and the eleven foot driving lanes that are going on the bridge. And that's kind of based on the staff responses, kind of, we're kind of moving forward with that concept, looking at the feasibility and loading of that based on responses that we, we got. I don't know if there's any comments from, from the commission about that.
So, so that proposal, Luke, would, would basically the sidewalks would remain their current width? Am I hearing that correctly?
They go to ten feet wide.
They will go to ten feet, that's not the, the concrete loading issue?
I think what Luke was saying was they were originally eleven and they're going to reduce them to ten.
Ten and a barrier instead.
With a barrier is what they're, is what they're looking at, they're, they're looking at right now.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Can I share my screen?
Sure.
That'd be awesome.
Heck, the picture's worth a million words sometimes. I thought I had it up.
Do we have to give him permission to share?
While we're working on that, can I ask a quick question? Where's the snow, uh, Luke? Where, where's the snow going to go? Right now, the sidewalks are used to store snow, where would the snow go?
With the barrier option? Yeah, so there would be about a two and a half foot shoulder between eleven foot lanes and the barrier. So there would be, that would be able to winrow some snow there. The snow, any additional, if you get a big event, the plows would push against that barrier and it would go over that barrier probably a little bit onto the sidewalk. And then that would be the, the city, Brainerd would be maintaining that sidewalk. All that'd be removal, snow removal on that.
Is that currently the case, Paul? No, so the city would inherit the maintenance of those sidewalks? You want to pop up and?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so currently, if there is snow and we get complaints at City Hall, we'll typically call MinDOT. And, you know, it's a last priority typically, but, you know, we have the equipment and things to do it. So it would be an easy task for us to maintain that. Come here in twenty twenty three, we're actually going to have another bridge that we're going to be maintaining snow on and that's on Highway twenty five over the railroad. That'll have a separated pedestrian trail. So not out of our realm, it's maintenance tasks, just more time and.
Work that into the bus route.
Yep.
Luke, is it allowing you to share?
Yeah, I'm just finding this.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't a, a thing on our end that it wasn't allowing you to.
I got the both, I got the one, but I just looking, I'm just not pulling up the one with the two. Here we go, I got it here. So. The two options we were looking at. Can you see it now?
We see a drawing here with the barrier on the left and the.
Yeah, so by going, looking, talking to the bridge office, these are kind of two options they kind of gave us is adding just solid concrete sidewalk. It would be a ten foot seven inch raised sidewalk with, with, you know, a two and a half foot shoulder, then your eleven foot driving lanes. There, otherwise, your other option would be to do a nine foot three inch trail. That's, you know, the same elevation as your bridge, the traffic's driving on. But having this jersey barrier essentially between the traffic and pedestrians. And this would have a two and a half foot shoulder also. That would provide for snow storage, just as a little bit old, this is, you know, had a five foot. So we reduce that to the four foot median that we're proposing on the rest of the project. And we put that half foot in the, in the shoulder width out there.
Luke, do you have any, any way you can visually show us what the underpass, pedestrian underpass of the Washington Street Bridge would look like?
No, that's, the, the current, most current that we have is from actually the city of Brainerd Riverwalk Trail. I don't think they went on a pass there, but that'd be kind of something how we would try to tie into something like that.
Does this involve perhaps acquiring more property in the right of way? Because the right of way is pretty small on, especially on the east side.
Yep, that is, that is just a high level look at it right now. That is the issue of where, where that trail would, would tie in. And would it be right at the two ten or would it come up at a different location based on the elevation challenges there?
And, Mr. Chair. If I may too, it's kind of, I think that goes, I think what Luke is talking about where with all of, with the, with a lot of this project, you know, again, there are elements, and Paul can speak to it too, where it's kind of an accessory project, which then comes into, MinDOT's going to be looking at the city also partnering. So, you know, it's not MinDOT doing all of it, it might be the city too. And that's where I think Luke was talking about, looking at if they were to go down that, kind of getting that high level of what would it even cost if it could be, if it can be done, what would it, what would it cost? And then is it, MinDOT all paying for it? Is MinDOT, is it the city paying for it? Is it a split? And I think Paul could probably speak to more what those kind of things look like. But there are a number of those items throughout the project where the city, it's, you know, lighting and things like that fall more on the city. And Paul can speak to a little bit to that as well.
Yeah, I kind of think about this as the importance of the layout and things are a large portion of this project. So the pedestrian movements, the traffic movements, all how those things interact is a large portion of this. But I think a really huge part of this that sometimes gets overlooked, such as like South Sixth Street, are what the city can do to improve aesthetic, what the city can do to, you know, make the corridor inviting. Right now, you look at Highway two ten and it's less than inviting to someone traveling either by bike or by walking or by vehicle. I think the city really needs to take a very deep look into how we provide aesthetic improvements, whether that's colored concrete, you know. I hesitate to say green space because of the issues we see with salt kill. There are salt tolerant trees and things. However, the amount of, of, you know, salt that we see MinDOT use and the consistent plowing and things is going to be a very, very hard environment to keep things alive. That worries me, you know, we get a brand new project and we plan for all this beautiful green space and it ends up dying because we can't keep it alive. So, you know, really the last ten percent of the project, you know, the aesthetic stuff, which is a majority of the city cost, that's where we can really make it look good and make it, you know, something we can be proud of. The ninety percent part being what MinDOT's concentrating on right now, those aesthetic items come after this layout process. So, and Luke, I think you can probably touch on the cost share that MinDOT has in their policy. But I believe it's, you know, the city pays basically, MinDOT can participate, what, five percent, I think, in aesthetic improvements? And that's basically the difference between, you know, placing stamped colored concrete in lieu of regular sidewalk. So whatever that cost difference is, MinDOT participates five percent, the city picks up the rest. So we're going through that right now on South Sixth Street with MinDOT for the other, you know, mile or so that goes south of Joseph Street. We included some aesthetic improvements down there to help with that. But that's really where the city can really pull out its checkbook and, you know, lighting and, and make it an inviting corridor. Obviously, like I said, the traffic and the pedestrian stuff is very, very important to start with. But then we will be, once that gets sorted out, that's going to be a big part of this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Erickson.
I've got a question, probably mostly for Paul, but perhaps Luke can chime in too. As has been summarized, I think the crossing two ten has been emphasized, can't emphasize it enough. That's a priority for the city. But when I, as far as how to achieve that, when I'm hearing underpass, skywalk, I'm thinking those are pretty exotic treatments. Can we, and I'm open to exploring those, but, you know, Paul, am I correct in assuming like using crosswalks, bump outs, pedestrian refuges, colored concrete? Can we accomplish the same things at perhaps intersections at fourth, sixth, eighths, potentially thirteenth or any combination of those?
You're right, from the exotic standpoint, exotic, often underused. A lot of pedestrian overpasses are quite underused because pedestrians will always take the path of least resistance. If you have to climb fifty stairs to get to the top and go across the highway, you're most likely going to choose the path of just walking across the highway. Same goes for, for example, our underpass under the College Drive. Often not seen very well and a good place for people to put graffiti. You know, from that maintenance aspect, it's, you know, obviously a safe place. But once again, path of least resistance says cross the highway, don't go underneath. There's other projects obviously in the works that would promote more walking underneath the bridge. But those types of things is what I think about because we do the maintenance on this stuff. And that stuff, the bridge perspective is, is much less appealing to me. From, yes, that standpoint, bump outs, colored concrete, all are great improvements. I would let Luke comment on MinDOT's take on bump outs. But, you know, any, any way we can enhance crosswalks and make them more visible to the driver and make them respect the crosswalk is, is, you know, a benefit. Pedestrian refuge is a great way to cut the crossing distance in half. Luke can comment on the need for the number of lanes on this corridor. Being that traffic is so heavy, it will have to maintain most likely that five lane section. So, yeah, I mean, any, anytime you can cut pedestrian distance, you're going to improve safety. Anytime you can enhance crosswalks, you're going to improve safety. Anytime you can have better lighting, you're going to improve safety. It's just, it all comes into play. And a lot of that is, you know, going to be, you know, talked about after this kind of layout process, if I'm not wrong, Luke.
Correct, yeah. Bump outs, colored concrete, that's more of an aesthetic thing that would come in, come in for the colored concrete. But bump outs are a tool in the toolbox that we use for pedestrian crossings. We, you know, this is a unique corridor, you know, as, as it is, you know, we want the pedestrian crossings, but it does have oversized overweight loads and a lot of volume. So we have to take that into consideration too. Doesn't mean we'll, won't look at bump outs, but that there is certain risks that we need on the highway for some of these loads and, and some of our, our plow trucks to, to maintain. But yeah, that's some of the details that'll be shown, I think, on this next more detailed layout with those, with those tools that we can utilize for, for helping pedestrians get the least distance across those, those lanes sometimes.
Just to follow up if I, if I might. And I don't ask that question to diminish the need for the crossing either, you know, because I'm thinking if we can do really rock star crossings at several of those intersections, I mean, that's what I want. And if that's accomplished through an underpass or overpass, I guess, you know, so be it. But I don't want to, if that's a, you know, I don't want to get expectations up if that's simply not something that's going to happen.
Yeah, and.
Nor for, you know.
Right, I can, I had a thought, but I lost it.
But that's all I wanted to add on that.
Ms. Woodward.
Touching on the green space issue, I know that the chemical treatment for the roads causes an issue. Can we think about relabeling our green space and calling it art space and reaching out to our art community to fill in those voids with something that would, would handle the salt treatments? We have a thriving, underutilized art community in our city. And to take that green space that we need for the aesthetic and fill it with sculpture, art, or whatever our, our community can come forward with would go, it would go above and beyond to brighten up that corridor.
That's an excellent point.
Luke, what is MinDOT's, you know, I think you guys have permits for that kind of stuff for improvements in the trunk highway right of way?
Yeah, yeah, you know, if it's sculptures or something like that, yeah, there's, there's permitted uses to have that within. In the, in the right of way, if it's just like paint or, or something on, paint on something on the concrete, we'd have to look at, you know, where it is and if it's going to, you know, interact with the, the traffic control, how that works. But yeah, I think it's, it's an option we can look at and permit within our right of way, I believe.
We also, oh, follow up. We also have some areas in our city that have removable sculpture art as well so that it doesn't affect snow removal and things like that, like the, the one in front of the co-op downtown that gets moved off so that it's easier to clear the snow. Installation pieces like that that are seasonal are also, and might be an option to consider.
Yep.
Yeah, and I think the biggest thing that we came in with MinDOT, you know, knowing right of way, and I've talked to David about this, it's, we have to figure out, and this has been a common theme in all of our meetings, it's balancing because anytime you take up space for one item, you're taking space away for another. And with an eighty foot right of way, and that's without any kind of right of way acquisition, that's what we're dealing with, it's, it's eighty feet. You have a certain amount of width that you need for traffic lanes. And we're grabbing as much as we can for pedestrian improvements. I think we've worked through a lot of, you know, worked with MinDOT on getting the lanes down to eleven feet width, which is big for helping to calm speeds. And obviously, the crossing thing has been on the top of our list since the first day the PMT started meeting and we started receiving feedback, so.
So Luke, it, you know, this inherent conflict between MinDOT's interest in moving vehicles and the city's interest in moving pedestrians from, from the neighborhoods to the downtown area and back. You know, short of the, the, the super engineered solutions, I mean, are, what are some, what are some technologies and approaches that would prioritize moving pedestrians across the corridor? You know, in a way that doesn't, you know, inordinately encumber the pedestrians, you know, that they're in a reasonably equal priority with the vehicle flow? What, what, what things does MinDOT typically use in that way? Or what things are you thinking about for this application?
Yeah, yeah, MinDOT's a multimodal transportation thing, you know, we have to move cars, but we do do focus on pedestrians and bicycles and all, all types of modes. We actually have groups in our central office that, they come up and they actually travel these corridors and do field visits and stuff like that and give us reports on. And some of those things, we've, we've, we've taken away from those reports. And, and like Mr. Erickson was, was saying, you know, some of those tools are bump outs that we can use to help people cross. And, and they're always looking at to the distance that those pedestrians have to cross. As Paul said, this is, this is a five lane section and I don't believe that, you know, we can reduce that with the amount of volume going through here. But, you know, is, is there opportunities to maybe put a refuge somewhere where, where attorney movement isn't needed? Or to, to reduce that, you know, complete crossing of, of all five lanes and, and cut it that in half type of thing. We don't know if there's that opportunity yet, but those are some of the tools that we can, we can look at and how, how that interacts with the rest of the project. um, and how, how that interacts with the rest of the project.
And, and crossing signals and things to that effect, um, you know, how do, how do those, how do those work when I walk up to the intersection and I mash the button, I'm not sure if it, it heard me or not, you know? So you mash it again, you mash it again, you know, not necessarily in an impatient way. But how do, how do, how does that register and what is, what is, if, what is a wait frequency or wait timing that you, you have somebody there queued up for a, for a, a pedestrian to, to, before you're allowing them to stop the vehicles and let them, let them cross?
Yeah, I don't have quite the, the answer, the science on that one. That's, that's, uh, we rely on our traffic programmers on that, 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 that put all that information in those cabinets that are sitting in those, you know, intersections. But, um, yeah, it's, all these intersections will be upgraded with the newest, um, equipment and, and pedestrian crossing technology, uh, so you'll have, have those, um, the, the new, you know, um, crossings where it's audible and, and you can, um, easy to push the buttons, uh, and buttons on every quadrant type of thing. Um, the timing is, it's, it's, it's science. Uh, right now, we, we did have some responses that, you know, pedestrians saying that when they do push a button, it seems like it takes forever, um, to cross. And then when they do have to cross, they have to shuffle across pretty fast. Um, uh, that is, that is an issue we're, we're aware of. Um, how we get around that is, is, it's, it's, this is going to be tough because you have, um, that amount of traffic to, to get through that corridor. Um, you know, you're looking on the west side there thirty, thirty, over thirty thousand cars a day. Um, when somebody pushes that button, we can't stop traffic on a dime to, you know, stop for that one person to, to cross. So there is some weight, uh, for those pedestrians and that usually coordinates with the, the side street, uh, traffic demand too. Um, you know, how much demand there is on the traffic on the side street and coordinating that pedestrian crossing with that. Um, so, yeah, there is, there is a, um, definitely a science doing that, uh, with that, the timing of, of all that. We'll definitely, uh, I have to look hard into that, um, aspect.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Gorman.
Are the buttons even hooked up?
You've never waited that long.
I really have my doubts. I really have my doubts.
Maybe some of them might not be working. I, I, I can't tell you if they're not. Sorry.
Yes, Lord, thank you.
Can we take you, um, to the far east end of the project here, to that, uh, twenty-five and Mill Avenue, County Three? Um, two-ten intersection there, um, you know, number of, uh, we had a lot of discussion around that intersection specifically, uh, as, as Director Chansky indicated, you know, how do we, how do we make the trail crossing there? And it seemed like the designs, um, had the trail almost, I don't know, two or three crossings to get across. They had to cross twenty-five to then cross over, um, uh, two-ten to then cross over Mill Avenue. It seemed like there was a lot of, uh, times that you had the trail crossing and then getting at the issue of how long you have to stand in queue before a, a, a pod of bicyclists, for example, might go. Then you add in the, um, the, the roundabouts, which don't have a, a predictable pattern to traffic stopping, like a traffic light stops things, you can kind of figure out when the, when to begin to step out. Um, the, those roundabouts seem to be challenging for a pedestrian or a cyclist, a bicyclist to enter. What, where, where's the, where, where were you thinking on that? Um, how do we get people across that and bikes across those?
Yeah, so the proposed route, do you guys aware of, is, is the, you know, you know, crossing the, the kind of like trail on, you know, at this intersection here and going south on twenty-five? So with that signalized intersection, um, um, yeah, it'll be just like all the other signalized intersections. There's going to be a demand for, for, for vehicles at that intersection, uh, but there will also be demand for pedestrians. So we'll have to coordinate that balance with the timing of, of when those, um, uh, are, are, are activated and everything. Um, with a roundabout, um, there is a, you know, high, high level of traffic through there on a roundabout, but it looks a lot worse than it is. Um, you know, it's, 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 um, in reality, when you get to a roundabout, you're, you're, you're crossing it in many phases. So that helps a lot, uh, as far as, um, people that can't multitask, uh, a lot of times and try to look at in two different directions and make that choice. With a roundabout, you can, you can essentially look at one direction and make that choice to cross when you have that gap. And wait in that refuge and then, then navigate to the next, um, crossing and, and make that choice when you have that one gap. Um, it seems like there's a lot of steps, but when you break it down into, um, um, that, you know, the simpler steps, um, that's, it's a lot safer choice, um, that, that reduces the, those, uh, type of conflicts versus the pedestrian trying to, um, navigate a lot of different other, uh, conflicts all at once. So it, you know, with a roundabout, we, we can, we can move pedestrians through that too. We're not concerned. There are, there are gaps, uh, that will occur on a, on a roundabout because this roundabout has many different demands, uh, of direction. You know, there's, there's demand, there's demands all four ways on this roundabout. So by having that demand of traffic in those four ways, uh, just naturally allows breaks in, 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 in the, in the, in the roundabout. If this was a heavy demand in one direction, then, then we would be concerned. And, and honestly, a roundabout wouldn't be the correct tool probably, uh, at this location.
Engineer Sandy.
Yeah, and actually, uh, interesting little tidbit. So, um, right now, the U of M has reached out to the city to, uh, they're doing research on pedestrian crossings at roundabouts and Brainerd came up on their list as, uh, locations to look at, uh, the, how colored concrete works to help, uh, delineate pedestrian crossings at roundabouts. And College Drive is a perfect example of colored concrete and roundabout, uh, interaction. And so they are placing cameras, uh, for, uh, pedestrians to see how they interact, uh, at the roundabout locations. I think at fourth and, uh, the location below the high school, you'll see some, um, traffic and pedestrian cameras up there. And will be part of that research project, uh, moving forward to, um, get the U of M to give their take on how those two modes interact with colored concrete instead of the normal zebra crosswalk.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Just a personal anecdote. I have personally ridden the Northwest Fourth Jackson intersection, um, multiple times, um, even during high traffic, um, commuting periods. And I've never felt uncomfortable on that roundabout as a cyclist.
The wet, the West College Drive one is, it, I, it's hard to be in that crosswalk at the top because you get traffic coming up the hill. They don't get the, the sight lines. That one's tough. And that's the one that's in the study. Interesting. Uh, curiosity about, about the, uh, the wetlands at that intersection. Are those public water wetlands or are those stormwater ponds?
Uh, we still have to evaluate those, uh, wetlands, but, uh, we're assuming those are just, they're, they're not considered public water, but they're, uh, wetlands that are regulated. Uh, so, um, they're like a type, a type one through six wetland.
Are they not engineered wetlands from early iteration of Highway two-ten and?
I don't believe so. Believe so. There is, there is some history in those wetlands, I believe, though, uh, that we're digging up, you know? Some, some people say there's no bottom to some of those wetlands.
One of those.
We have to do a little more research in it.
Mr. Erickson.
Before we put a road there.
Um, Luke, this is Tad. Um, I figured I better mention this now or I'll never, never say it. I don't even know if I have support from the group on this, but my idea regarding the reducing the trail conflict here at this roundabout or this intersection would be, I mentioned this at the last meeting, is if I'm in the southern end there, I'm on twenty-five and I'm headed north on the trail, would it be a possibility, and maybe it's a question more for Paul too, just to extend the trail west and have it cross at the new, what will be the new intersection at fifth? And then connect with this, the trail that's already there on the north. Paul's coming up to?
Yeah, so that was a discussion we had early on with the DNR. Um, and they are not i- in favor of large switchbacks on their trail systems because, once again, pedestrians will take the path of least resistance, even there, if they're on a state trail for recreating. Um, they may not go down to the signal and take chances and utilize highway shoulders, et cetera, to cut across anyways. And so they, um, they were not in, in support of that, um, and thus why we've been coordinating both with the DNR and MinDOT with this project of realigning the trail. Um, and some of the options, like Luke shows here, that signal actually goes away at fifth.
Or moving it to fourth?
No, the signal goes away completely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. With the inclusion of a roundabout, on the roundabouts, the signal goes away.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's no longer needed because the gaps in traffic are sufficient to, uh, have traffic cross over onto fifth.
But even if we put signs like two McDonald's?
Yeah, it, it might help. You know, you might have a hungry pedestrian or bicyclist.
All right, thanks.
Other questions or comments or?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gorman.
Um, is this, has the speed limit ever been considered, is it going to be thirty-five miles an hour forever and that's it? Has there ever been a discussion about slowing traffic to make it a little safer? Mister, uh, we have our city engineer, Mr. Sandy.
Speed limits and signs don't matter. It's the design of the street.
Okay.
And it's evident whenever you have a well-designed street, you can have speed limit signs everywhere and traffic will be lower than the speed limit because the street's well-designed. Um, I'm a big proponent and, and saying that, traffic will speed if traffic is allowed to speed. Traffic will speed on wide open corridors because they feel comfortable. Um, traffic will not speed if you have a well-designed corridor with narrower lanes, so you make them feel uncomfortable. You can put as many signs as you want onto Highway two-ten and no one will respect those signs.
Do you feel the, uh, the design that's being proposed on two-ten will, uh, will achieve that?
I think eleven-foot lanes help a lot.
Yeah.
Um, thirty-five miles an hour. I don't know what MinDOT's take on what the statutory speed limit is on two-ten. Is it thirty-five, Luke?
Yeah, it's posted at thirty-five currently.
Right. So, I mean, is MinDOT, would MinDOT be interested in lower speed limits?
Uh, we'd have to do, uh, a speed study, uh, probably on that. Uh, there's some.
With the new design or the old design? Would be my question.
Uh, it'd be the new, new design. Yep, yep. We'd have to do that after the design is done, um, speed study. And there's, there's some flexibility within the city limits of, of changing speed limits.
So, I mean, we could, we could post it a speed limit, but if, even if you put it to twenty-five and the road's not designed, uh, properly, you're going to have people traveling at thirty-five to forty.
I think a prime example of that is the, the way it was coming into town on Riverside Drive, where the speed limit, uh, myster, was at thirty miles an hour on the top of the hill, then it opened up to like fifty for two blocks. And while it was wide open, people were going to go fifty anyhow.
Yeah, it's a perfect example because when the city took that over from the county,
Yeah.
we restriped that to two lanes and, and incorporated bicycle lanes.
Sure.
And it's very difficult, if you are a driver, to travel at thirty miles an hour heading down the hill on Riverside Drive. And that's a wide and.
It doesn't keep people from getting tickets.
It doesn't. It does not, but, but that wide of a street is comfortable and you will speed. And I catch myself doing it. Uh, Oak Street's another prime example, um.
I catch myself. It's the police captain.
Yeah, and I'll speak, I can speak to that too. I drive that, on average, I drive that stretch four times a day. And, and, and as Paul said, you know, when the city took that over, we restripped it to one lane. It helps, but until that, you know, road gets actually reconstructed and then physically narrowed, you still, you go down that hill and you're at one forty-five, you barely feel it because of how wide it is.
Going up is a little different. Uh, I think there's a different, uh, perspective view. If you're going down a big hill, you feel like you can go faster. Um, but it is all about proper design of streets. It's,
Yeah.
uh, you could post eight hundred signs on, on two-ten that say it's be limited thirty miles an hour and traffic will still travel at forty to forty-five like you see today.
We should put a little parallel course, slalom course or something. I don't know.
Serpentine.
On, on Chair, Mr. Chair, just to, to speak a little bit, uh, um, just even with this existing corridor right now, um, as you drive this, uh, traffic volume has a lot to do with the speed right now. If you travel this corridor at four o'clock in the afternoon, you're probably traveling thirty miles an hour, thirty-five at the most probably, but if you're traveling this at six in the morning, uh, you can easily do forty, forty-five on this, uh, comfortably. And, and as the traffic goes up on this in the next twenty years, that, that, that speed's going to just naturally go down as it gets more congested, uh, with this corridor.
It will be designed, it will be designed to fail right, um, in the future here and, um, you know, it, it, this discussion about how to, how to, um, narrow the lanes brings me back to the bridge for just a minute and, and what, um, what alternatives to Jersey barriers get you the same effect of comfortable distance from the traffic and yet aren't like Jersey barriers?
Color Jersey barrier.
Because those, those are ugly. You know, so you, you, you've, you've solved one problem, but it just kind of just.
You can make Jersey barriers very aesthetic and that's, you know, what the city would, where the city would participate. Um, for example, Highway twenty-five.
Yeah, if you would, yeah.
Um.
Highway twenty-five, we actually set aside a subcommittee that, uh, went over aesthetic improvements on the Highway twenty-five bridge. It included a railing that looks like a railroad track. It has brick, um, accents like you see. Um, well, we went with the brick accent because we have a kind of a red colored theme on our roundabouts and we have old brick factories in that section of town in northeast Brainerd. So we did stick with that concept. So, much like you see what Baxter did on the three-seventy-one bridge coming into, uh, Baxter, with those aesthetic improvements, we can do that kind of stuff to help that aesthetic out. Uh, if it's on the inside, um, you know, that's what we did on the twenty-five bridge is that the pedestrian gets the aesthetic appeal. The traffic, you know, maybe it's a different colored Jersey barrier, but, um, I don't know. That's a possibility in this case, correct, Luke? If MinDOT is going through this, there will be an opportunity for the city to make aesthetic bridge improvements that would, um, complement the new redecking.
Yeah, and then there, you know, the sky's the limit on bridges sometimes, whatever you want to do within, within the re, rehabilitation of the, the deck anyways, I guess you might say.
And MinDOT has a very talented, um, I worked with, uh, I believe she was a landscape architect down in Central Office and we worked with them very closely with the mayor and, uh, another, uh, council member. I don't remember who it was. But to come up with a design and basically put it in front of the council for them to look at. And, uh, they were all in concurrence that it would be a great entrance to our city. So that's, that's in our tool basket.
If I can, Mr. Chair, as well, I think that's, this is where maybe the council would look for some recommendations from the commission. As Paul said earlier, this is the things that the city can do. Um, you know, when it comes to putting up the Jersey barrier, MinDOT will put up a Jersey barrier if you want it nice. It's going to be Jersey barrier plus whatever that additional is for the nice thing. That's what the city's going to have to take on. Um, so that's what it'll be. I think the council will be looking for recommendations of what areas should those kind of aesthetics be made? Um, and what do those aesthetics look like as the city then also begins to plan and budget for their, our piece of this project?
For, for both the city and, and for MinDOT, I, I would say to look to our comp plan gateway district to say, these are the areas, right? Um, so the bridge is a big one, um, as we're coming into the city from the west and, and this, um, this, what we have on screen here on the east side again is, so being smart about the design choices and the aesthetic aspect of those design choices. of those design choices will really hit the, the comp plan very strongly, I think, if, with that gateway district defined in those areas. Anything else? All right, well, with that, Luke, thank you very much for sitting in with us and, and kind of catching us up on this and hearing some of our key issues that we hope can be addressed here, informing us of what your thinking is. Look forward to the third round of engagement this winter, it looks like. And as we kind of, again, you're, you're, you're bringing it closer and, and in greater detail through your process here. So that's an, an exciting next step here for us. Thank you for also being patient while we did our other business of the meeting.
Oh, the great, the great part about that is I can do other work while I'm on my computer here. So that's, that's nice. We're doing virtual.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Woodward.
I may address one more thing. Is it in the plans to put a left-hand turn lane for eastbound traffic at the cell six intersection so that traffic can turn north there again?
Yeah, so that was brought up a few different times, and we are gonna be looking at that. We haven't looked at anything in detail yet. We're just compiling all this stuff. Then we need to meet at, meet as a PMT to kind of go over this and sketch it all out. Then we're gonna let the detailed design people kind of look at the feasibility and the possibilities of all these recommendations and suggestions on this called corridor and how it fits with, with everything.
Luke, it's not like really pertinent to the two-ten, but we are planning on doing some work on North Sixth Street right there in twenty-twenty-two. So if we come up with any solutions at that, that affect what's north of there, it's gonna come into conversation.
Yeah, yeah, we can discuss that more and coordinate those, those two.
Very good. Any other business related to this item? Hearing none. Again, thank you, Luke, and I believe we're moving on to now our item eight on the agenda, public forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to bring matters to the, not on the agenda, the attention of the planning commission. Time limits may be imposed, and so we'll open that public forum at eight-twelve. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the commission? Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the commission?
Chuck, you got nothing?
I am not to make eye contact. Is there?
Get a shot.
I mean, I can always say something.
Hearing none.
Okay. You wanna hear?
Come on, Chuck. Bring it up. Bring it.
Okay.
Name an address.
Chuck Marone, six-one-six North Forest. It's fun to be here with you guys and sit through this. It's fun to be on this side and not that side. So I appreciate you guys still coming here and doing this. You, you, with the hat and everything, you look like you might need that warming shelter. You kind of have that hobo look to you tonight. It's okay. I'm just teasing you, buddy. Okay, let's make this sixty seconds. I, I think that, that, that shelter thing that they're asking for, if you read your ordinance on a hotel, there's no, there's no difference between what that, your definition is and what they're asking to do. There's no, there's no difference at all. And I understand that you're like, well, it seems like the public might call it something different. I feel like we always run into these problems when we try to so narrowly define everything in our ordinance, you know? Oh, so we're, we're gonna do a hotel, we're gonna do a hotel that would be extended stay, or we're gonna do a hotel that would be overnight, or we're gonna do... I literally went to a course at the APA once where they had a, a manual that was two and a half inches thick of every potential use you could ever have. It was the most absurd session I've ever been to in my life. So the ordinance, to me, has all this flexibility and we can choose to use it or not. And if you choose to use it, go for it. If you choose not to, I just feel like we're creating a lot of unnecessary stuff. It's not like a hotel is a conditional use. It's a permitted use. Like in the B-four district, we said, come in and do it. You don't even have to, you just go talk to him. You don't have to come here. You don't have to ask permission from anybody. You just do it. So, anyway, that's my sixty seconds. I'll be done with that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone online? James? All right. Well, with that, then we'll close the public forum at eight-fifteen, and we'll go to Community Development Director's report. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few things tonight. Update on the, the council did adopt the commission's recommendations for sober homes. They did, we're gonna be implementing those requests for reasonable accommodation forms. Working on those right now. Just getting those under the right formatting and fillable PDFs and all that. And we'll be, are implementing those. And then, and then also looking at taking no further action at this time regarding regulations. And we'll just continue to observe and keep an eye out for any issues that may arise that need to be addressed in the future. Additionally, the council did consider the residential standards for the new zoning code during a workshop. When did they meet? Oh, on October eleventh. By and large, those, all those recommendations, and we did implement some of the comments that the commission made during your workshops. We implemented those, so the council could see those. By and large, they were well, very well-received. And I think we got a, a very big thumbs up from the council on moving forward with those. The council will be considering the commercial recommendations on November eighth. On that, because we weren't able to have a quorum for that meeting, the commission is invited to sit into that meeting and will just notice that there may be a quorum of the commission, so we don't have to worry about that. If you want to also sit in, into that, again, this will be primarily with the city council having that discussion. If any members of the commission wanted to join into that meeting, we'll be sure to notice that, so we don't have any quorum issues. Again, that's on Monday, November eighth at six P.M. As mentioned earlier, the council is also having a workshop this upcoming Monday, the twenty-fifth, at six P.M. here in this, planning, I believe, in this room. They'll be meeting with the parking commission, hearing the parking commission's recommendations. So what their recommendations are, some of them will be coming back, if taken up, probably to the planning commission to consider. The one main one being looking at implementing regulations into our code that require new spaces, so residential and maybe even commercial spaces, when they apply for permits and such, to provide a parking plan. So we're not, so that is just a recommendation, not require people to provide the parking or create new parking downtown. But if you're gonna create, you know, come in and you're gonna add eight new residential units, then you need to show us where those people are gonna park. So that's one of the recommendations that could end up back here to the planning commission should the council take that up. And then the final item I have, oh, actually, I'll go, first of all, Mr. Chair, you asked me to go through future meetings. At this time, we don't actually have any workshops planned for the council in the neck, of the commission the next month. Obviously, with, due to the warming shelter discussion tonight, I will get that poll out tomorrow to get a time set up for early next week, so then we can get that noticed. And we'll be working on language for that meeting. Your regular meeting in November is on the seventeenth. And then the plan is on, for your December fifteenth meeting, we'll bring in, so Jennifer and Mike will be back to discuss. Initially, it was to discuss the miscellaneous items, but now we're gonna be changing that a little bit based off some of the guidance we got from council and such. A lot of the, a lot of the remaining things out there are pretty similar to what we have now, so they're much smaller. So we will address those. But I think what that discussion on December fifteenth is gonna be mainly around, will actually be some design standards discussions. So the fifteenth is kind of gonna be turning to that design standard meeting, and we are gonna be inviting the city council to attend that meeting with you as well. So that's your meetings as they are planned right now till the end of the year. And then the last item I have, Mr. Chair, just to keep the commission up to date. I will be going on paternity leave here in the next few weeks. We are in baby window. My wife is due November eighth. So once that happens, once baby does make her arrival, I will be taking two full weeks off and then we're, working part-time for a few weeks after that. While I am gone, James is your guy. He'll be dealing all things planning and zoning, and I have full confidence that he'll be able to handle anything that comes our way. I'll, we'll be checking my email and such, so if there's anything that need addressed, I can do though. But James will be your person if you have any planning and zoning related questions once I go on paternity leave. And with that, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, and I hope you have a wonderful time on leave. That details to be named, right? All righty, so questions for staff on, on those updates? Hearing none. Commissioner questions and comments? Maybe start with Mr. Erickson?
Congratulations. And I think we had a really good discussion tonight on all, all three of these items, so good to see it progressing.
Ms. Woodward? Mr. Gorman?
I got nothing.
I got nothing. Well, I, I want to just do a quick commentary on, on the city council meeting regarding the sober home issue. There was a lot of turnout, a lot of the issues that we heard. And I want to thank all of you for your participation and contributions to that discussion because I feel like we, we set the council up well to be able to address a lot of the energy and the comments and such, that there was thorough work done by the commission to look at this issue, and, and they had the confidence that we did our work. And so I want to thank you for the time that you put on in that. So with that, I am looking for a motion-
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, just for means of noticing and such, if the, if, if the commission would like, I would recommend adjourning to the council workshop on November eighth at six P.M. That way noticing issues, if there's not a quorum, it's not a big deal, but this way it covers us.
Sounds great. So looking for a motion to adjourn to the workshop, city council workshop on November eighth.
So moved.
Move by Woodward, second by Gorman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, everyone.